All right, good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Board of Selectmen meeting on November 8th. All selectmen will be present. Mr. Kalenda is on his way. He will be a little bit late, but he will be here. First, I wanted to start by recognizing the fifth member that we have on the board after many months of being a Board of Four. Welcome to Mr. Shifrin. Congratulations to your victory yesterday. It's great to have you here on the board. There were -- there was a great race. It was great to see so many people come out and participate in the special election. They were great candidates, and welcome.
Thank you very much.
Floor is yours if you want to say anything. Otherwise, we can go right to --
No, I'll keep it brief. I just thank everyone that came out and supported me, and I'm very excited to get to work. So, thank you.
Very good. Great to have you here.
Thank you.
First item is 6:30 hearing. Class One License AMR Auto Holdings. Sure, if you want to read the --
Sure. Notice. Southborough Board of Selectmen shall hold a public hearing Wednesday, November 8th, 6:30 PM in the call of hearing room, Southborough Townhouse, 17 Common Street, Southborough, Mass. To consider a Class One License application from AMR Auto Holdings VS LLC doing business as Prime Volvo Cars Westboro to be located at 251 Turnpike Road, Route 9 in Southborough. All interested parties are encouraged to attend Southborough Board of Selectmen. So, I don't know if the applicant is here this evening. With the applicant not being present, my suggestion is that you table the hearing.
Why don't we table the hearing until they --
Table the hearing at this point until they arrive, and we can move on.
Okay. So, table that. The next item that we will get to under scheduled appointments. Police Chief Ken Paulus. Appointment of Cameron Chapski as full-time student police officer.
Evening, everybody.
How are you?
Good evening. So, I'm happy to say I'm here tonight to request the appointment of the officer that was approved at town meeting. Was scheduled to go online October 1st. We kind of veered away a little bit from our usual hiring process. We usually look for somebody with the academy training, and we've had some luck in the past doing that. But I think even when you go back to my first interview here, I stated that the most important thing that I can do as a chief is hire good people. And that'll continue on, you know, long after I'm gone. So, we looked at the process. We started out with almost 30 applicants, and we whittled them down. We brought 12 back for an interview, and we included people who did not have the full-time academy. And we went forward with interviews, and although we did have some of those people, by far and away, the gentleman on the side of me, Cam Chapski, came out number one initially with the sergeants. All five sergeants conducted the first round of interviews. He was number one by far. We followed that up with a second interview with myself and the lieutenant. Also came out number one amongst five people. And then we continued on to an interview with the town administrator to confirm everything that we saw. So, I'm very happy to say that we'll be recommending him tonight. And I'm also happy to say we have a good farm system going because three of the last four hires are town residents and Algonquin grads. So, I'll just tell you a little bit about Cameron. Mr. Chapski is currently employed with the town as a full-time telecommunications officer. He's held that position since March of 2015. He was elevated from a part-time position, which he started in September of 2013. In addition, Mr. Chapski is a graduate of Algonquin Regional High School, holds an associate's degree in criminal justice from Quinzigman Community College. He's a town resident, as I stated. His employment history, background check, and interviewing skills reflect a high level of communication and community policing skills. Mr. Chapski's appointment would be of great benefit to the department and the residents of Southborough. I am advocating he start on a date to be determined at the student officer rate of 700 per week, which will end when Mr. Chapski becomes certified as a police officer after graduation from the MPTC Academy. He will then transition to a Step One Full-Time Officer. And currently, it's open-ended. He's still currently working for us in telecommunications. However, we have to secure a spot for him in an upcoming January academy, which will take about six months. And then after his graduation in June, then he'll go on the road in his field training. And as I said, it was kind of the process to hire academy trained, but when we looked at all the candidates, sometimes the best candidate is worth waiting for. So, we're willing to invest in him, and I know he's already invested in the town and working for us. And as a resident, he came through the Junior Police Academy. He became an instructor at the Junior Police Academy. He's worked for the rec department, and he's involved in the community.
Excellent. Thank you very much. So, he's going to be starting in January at the academy. Would that be full-time for him? Will he be available for any continuing in a student officer role during that time period from January through June, July, as you had indicated?
No, it's full-time in the academy. That's a full-time. And he won't be certified as a police officer until he graduates. That's why the designation in the contract states student officer. And upon graduation, they become a full-time officer.
Okay. Very good. And again, I also echo the sentiments. Good to see the local people being selected, and, you know, it's not just handed to them. They're showing, they're demonstrating their qualifications through this process. It's very good to see.
Welcome this evening.
Thank you.
I've spoken with Officer Chapski on the phone several times as an emergency dispatcher. That's what a telecommunications officer is. He's a professional. He's assisted more than once on emergency calls to a resident. So, I'm pleased that you're stepping up to the next phase of your career.
Thank you.
Thank you. Also, I think it's wonderful that you're a Southborough resident. I also have had the absolute pleasure of on the drive for Puerto Rico. Mr. Chapski, and I'm going to say this wrong, but was there volunteering during the day. And once again, seeing him interact within the community and being able to take a police officer that understands our town and our residents, I think it's just a win all around. So, I appreciate you. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Do we know that he's in in January to start for sure?
We're going to drive the paperwork up there tomorrow to confirm it. Those spots are going fast, so we want to secure them definitely for the January class.
Okay, great. Thank you for your service, and best of luck at the academy.
Thank you very much.
Pretty good. So, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion that we take the recommendation of Chief Paulus to appoint, for the appointment of Cameron Chapski, I'm sorry, as full-time student police officer with a salary range of $700.
For second. Moves seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good luck.
Good luck. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief.
Good job.
Absolutely. Pleasure.
So, I'm going to assume there's still, nobody from the Volvo?
Yeah.
No. Okay.
Consent.
So, I am going to, so the next two appointments, I know particularly item three, Mr. Kalenda had added this to the agenda. I'm going to pull off a little bit, give him a chance to get here to lead the discussion on that. In the meantime, why don't we move ahead to town administrator report?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of issues or a couple of items for this evening. First, just to remind the board, the town offices are closed on Friday in observance of Veterans Day. Transfer station is closed on Saturday. We did make sure that that was tweeted out. Vanessa took care of that because obviously that is, that's a big day for the transfer station. And the fiscal '19 budgets, Mr. Ballantyne and I will begin meeting with departments next week along with Ms. Krieger to begin looking at what people are submitting for their budgets of fiscal '19. And hopefully shortly after Thanksgiving, we'll have a better idea as to what the expense lines look like and how they match up against revenues. And then we can have further discussions probably at our first meeting in December. The one thing that I wanted to just, on behalf of Jason Malanowski, the Chair of the Public Safety Building Committee, wanted to pass on a couple of things. The project is moving along. Just a couple of dates to keep in mind. On Monday, November 13th, the project is going to be before the planning board at 7:00 here at the hearing, at the townhouse. On Thursday, 11/16, the project is going to be in front of Conservation Commission. The next full committee meeting is on Monday, December 4th, and at that point, we're going to have the first cost estimates. The cost estimator is going to be taking a look at the project and seeing where we are based on what we've come up with in design development versus where we are with the budget, which will help us before we begin construction documents. And we'll do that again during the construction document process to make sure we're still on track. And then Tuesday, December 5th, which is our next meeting, they would, Jason and/or other members of the committee would like to come and just give a formal update to the board. I believe the intention is also to invite advisory to that as well. One other piece, at their last meeting, the committee approved a procedure for the approval of extra work on the project. If things come up in between meetings, how are those things held or how are those things are going to be dealt with? And it was delineated that I would be assigned as the point of contact. The secondary point of contact would be the chairman of the committee, Mr. Malanowski. And things are divided up in between whether or not they have impacts on the time schedule for the project, because obviously we're still looking potentially shovels in the ground in June, or whether or not they're simply monetary items. If they don't have impacts to the schedule, the likelihood is that the items would be held until the following meetings. So, Jason just asked me to relay that to you, and that's all I have this evening.
Mr. Purple, can I ask one question?
Yes.
Do you know the November 16th Conservation Commission meeting?
Yes.
Do we know what time for that?
I do not.
Okay, that's fine.
Yeah, let me take a look and see if it's been posted yet.
Nope, that's fine. I just was wondering. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Purple. Let's move to consent agenda items. Item one, approve meeting minutes, August 17th. Two, accept pilot payment 52,036 from New England Center for Children. Three, accept donations for rec commission for Fayetteville Playground Project, $17,134.30 from Southborough Parents, $500 from Southborough Rotary Club. Four, reappoint Jennifer Pullen to Southborough Cultural Arts Council, term 11/8 through, 11/8/17 to 11/8/19. Five, approval of projects related to green communities funding. Six, award contract for replacement of fuel tanks at Public Works. Seven, approve expenditure from Water Reserve Fund, Woodbury Road Intersection.
Second is red.
Move seconded in the discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That passes. All right. So, why don't we go to item three on scheduled appointments. Ms. Galligan, update on Flag Road safety study? So, if I could just, I guess, I'll just preface this with, as I understand, that there was a new resident of Flag Road that reached out to Mr. Kalenda and asked him for an update on where things stood with Flag Road. So, the reason this is on the agenda tonight was in response to that request from that new resident, just to update that person on what has happened recently with Flag Road. So, Ms. Galligan has put this little presentation together. So, this is intended only as an update for what has happened on Flag Road. Be really keyed in, as I understand it, as an update only.
Yes. So, just a quick history, too, of it is that through the Park Central permitting process, the current safety of Flag Road was brought up often at the meetings. Specific concerns had to do with walking and bicycling and having kids walk on the roads. And a lot of traffic calming was discussed actually at these meetings. So, the Public Safety Chiefs, DPW, requested that they do a quarter study, safety study on the road. And in the ZBA memo, the memo to the ZBA back in 2016, we requested the study. They performed a study in May. That report was actually in 2016 was put out there. We had a discussion in the August meeting, Selectmen. We had some huge forum back in September about it, and really no full conclusion was come to everything. But we did discuss all the different things in the safety study. So, the findings basically, 985 vehicles, so it was about 1,000 vehicles a day on Flag. Speed limit, there's actually one that's set there. It's 25 miles an hour. People are speeding. They're going 34 miles an hour. Eighty-five percent of the vehicles are going at 34 or lower. You know, peak hours are what you expect them to be. There's no pedestrian accommodations. Everybody knows this. There's no refuge. And it was determined that some traffic calming was needed. So, based on, if you look, it's all online, the report, they recommended some calming measures, which were putting yellow center line, dynamic speed feedback signs, fixing the geometry of the Flag and Deerfoot intersection, slow people down there. They also talked about speed humps, tables, cushions, private stone walls to be moved at the intersection of Blackthorne for sight distance, and sidewalks. The top three have been worked on. The bottom three are much more engineering intensive, much more, there's something that if the town were to implement. There's a lot of other roads that need some attention also, and before we invest in that money, we would need to prioritize that. We do need to look at the trees located along Flag. I know most people do believe that they're, they give a traffic calming benefit. However, some of them actually might be causing a little bit more of a hazard than they are benefit. Again, the speed humps, tables, cushions, those need to really be evaluated. They cause issues in terms of drainage, public safety response, and they're also noisy, and driver avoidance can lead the vehicles to go to another road. And then how does that affect our other neighborhood roads? Installing sidewalks, that's actually resolves the issue of walking and using it, but it's expensive. It's difficult on that road. I don't think people have, really have any taste for it, and we have a lot of other roads that need it also. So, yellow center line was painted. That was done in September when we did our regular line painting. Our contractor comes overnight and does that. There's nothing untoward going on with the nighttime striping. Four dynamic feedback signs are currently being installed. The foundations and the poles are in right now. I think there's a fixture on one of them at least. They're not activated yet, but they should be within the next couple of weeks. And this board approved for submittal, and then MathDOT approved using Chapter 90 funds to do the intersection redesign at Flag and Deerfoot. So, that work should be getting done in our next paving contract. We'll be meeting with the director butters to that to talk about the plans when they're done, which will probably be late winter, which is really like a March timeline. And then, just to point, you know, point of understanding of all this, town has a lot of issues with our few through streets we have. We have abundance of cul-de-sacs, and we also have this reservoir that does create few north-south streets that actually go anywhere, and we don't have many east-west streets. Most of those roads are original roads, so they're windy, they're narrow, they're tree-lined. They don't have drainage as a general rule. And walking on them is difficult, and basically it's the same problem that you have on Flag of how do you get, how do you put sidewalks in? So, many other streets, I get calls and emails from all kinds of all other streets. Middle Road, Parkville Road, Pine Hill Road, we did a study on that at one point, only just on an intersection, who are actually looking for us to evaluate their roads and do some other work on them. I had, back in January 2016, before I actually put the memo to the ZBA about Flag, I had gotten a price for doing, I think, six through streets, safety studies on them. At this point, we stopped that to do Flag, and now I actually do think we need to revisit those other ones because I have people saying, please just put a stripe on our street. So, we do need to look at kind of what small things we can do to at least deal with some concerns people have. And then any larger issues, it needs to be prioritized. We have, you know, Richard's Road carries almost 1,500 cars a day, and it's just a smaller road. And, you know, it actually carries more traffic than Flag Road, and we're really not looking at that for anything. So, we just need to keep our priorities in check on these through streets are definitely, they carry the bulk of the traffic because every cul-de-sac has to get out of their neighborhood. So, that's all.
So, thank you. So, yeah, so if there are questions or comments from the audience, just ask that you please line up at a microphone, just state your name, address, and yes, please. We can go from there. But before we do go to the audience, I'm going to ask the board if they have any questions or comments first of Karen. Ms. Phelan.
I have one question, Karen. On the intersection of Deerfoot and Flag Road, it says, one of your bullets, DPW and engineers will meet with the neighbors late winter. Are you talking butters to that intersection?
Yes.
Or are you talking neighborhoods?
We, I, we committed to the actual butters, that we would go through the plans with them. There's no reason anyone else can't show up at the meeting, but it was, it's specifically that we talked, that we would talk to them because they're going to see.
Post the meeting anyway.
Yep.
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Broschel.
Just a couple of questions, Karen. The speed humps, tables, and cushions. Now, again, I don't know the process. You have to go with DOT for even looking at that or what the requirements are for that. I know we've talked about different things on different roads, and some things are harder, whether it be a truck exclusion or whatnot. Can you just explain a little bit just for me, well, for everybody, obviously, but just kind of the process? And is there a set standard to some degree? I mean, any information on that?
So, for the speed humps, cushions, or anything of that, that's actually just an engineering design. The DOT does not have to approve those. You just have to meet the DOT standards for how they're ultimately designed?
Okay. That's easy enough one. Thank you. Also, I think it's great to have this meeting tonight. I see a lot of residents have shown up from that area, which clearly shows, obviously, they're concerned about what's going on in their neighborhood, as we all are. And I would just recommend if there's any way going forward before something's done on a street, I know I received some phone calls regarding the concrete bases and then the poles that had gone up. No one seemed to know what was going on with that. That's why I think this was great, and I thank you very much for doing it. But maybe going forward, if there's a way to kind of give the neighbors a heads up before a big change kind of comes to the neighborhood, I think that might be helpful, might alleviate some of the calls we may get, and just for informational purposes, whether it's one person from the neighborhood can forward everything out to everybody, but if we could just kind of give a heads up, I think that would alleviate some of the confusion as to what was actually going on and what was going in there. So, that's just a suggestion.
No, good suggestion. Thank you.
Also, the, I've heard this come up multiple times on Flag Road, being a scenic road. Is that a designation that's given to specific roads? If you could just touch on that for me.
Yes, so the planning board can designate any road as a scenic road based on, basically, the character of the road. In Southborough, they actually, when they did it, every road that existed, they made a scenic road. The only ones that can't be are Route 30, Route 85. You're not allowed to designate them as scenic. What the scenic road affects is stone walls and tree removal if you're doing it for a widening. Otherwise, the tree removal is handled the same way as it would be in, on any road, on Route 30 even. So, it's just a hearing. You're welcome.
Appreciate it.
Mr. Shifrin.
So, the only question I think I had was along the same lines as her comments or suggestions. When you -- suggestions, when you do a traffic study, do you then have to do the things that it, like, on this list? Like, is that why the line was done?
So, what had happened is, is we did the safety study, basically, because people had said that they had a lot of concerns and safety concerns. So, after nothing had really been done and nothing had been decided on, but there were, you know, complaints, that was why the things that you can do at a small cost, but that's going to make a difference, they're worth doing. And so, that was why the line, and then, obviously, the driver feedback signs. And then, the intersection is more expensive, but the intersection has other issues that had occurred with it that made that, you know, something that was worth spending, investing in.
Okay.
But we don't have to do speed humps or any of that. I mean, we really don't have to do any of it, but if something were to happen, you know, we'll have a lot of angry residents saying, but you didn't do anything, and you could have painted a line. How hard would that have been?
And I guess if I could just offer a little bit of background, because, and I think it was before you even joined the board, Lisa, as well. So, we had that forum back in September, and a major reason that Selectmen Rooney and I wanted to have that forum, and ultimately, the board decided to move ahead with the forum, was, so obviously, Flag Road was studied with respect to impacts from the proposed development that's going on there. But through that study, existing safety issues, existing traffic issues were identified with Flag Road. And with the identification of those existing issues and conditions, this board felt that it was incumbent upon us to take some action on that. So, that report that was prepared had identified a number of alternatives, some that could be implemented easily and readily, and some that obviously would take a lot more study, engineering, you know, if we were to widen the road, add sidewalks. The board felt that it was prudent to implement those measures that could be done readily and easily with the addition of the yellow road. So, we had requested that DPW implement those items that could be done readily, and it was really on one of the slides she had on the right-hand side, the three items that we are moving forward with. The yellow line, the feedback signs, you know, which personally, I find very helpful. I know I mostly see them, they're on a number of roads in town, I mostly see them on Middle Road, and I find them very effective to slow me down, and I know that it aggravates the person usually who's behind me, who's, when I'm going the speed limit, and they're just about in my backseat as well. So, I find those effective, we wanted to move forward with those. And not only with the traffic and safety issues, but with other issues that we heard about encroachments and damage to private property with mailboxes, lawns, other things, with the way that the current layout is, where Flag intersects with Deerfoot, we wanted to move forward with correcting that intersection. So, those were directions that were all made. You know, they were implemented by DPW over time. And again, we weren't mandated to do any of them, it's not as though there's a list of things that we still need, that have to do, but certainly, to address the existing conditions and existing problems that we saw, we thought that it was prudent to move forward with those items.
Can I ask one more question?
Yes.
Karen, as far as the informational polls, whatever, I don't know what you call them, specifically, that are going up.
Feedback.
Feedback, thank you. I appreciate that. As far as, is it in scale to, like, Middle Road, size-wise, are we looking at something similar to that, something possibly taller than that? So, if people want to have an idea of what it's going to look like when it's done, is there any comparison?
Yes, if you head south on Middle Road, on the north end of Middle Road, the first one you come to is the same, the same exact one that we have.
Yes. Okay. And one further comment, just for the board. I hope, possibly somewhere down the road, we can consider putting up some type of group together that maybe can use some of the expertise we have here in town. I know we've talked about this before, in setting something up to be a little proactive to more things. I think what's been done so far is great, but maybe with the great minds we have here in town, Golf Course Master Plan Committee is a fine example, that we maybe can come up with something outside of the box that might be able to help the residents as well.
Okay.
Just a thought.
Yep.
Thank you.
Do you need a full study in order to do things like the center line and feedback signs?
Not at all.
Okay.
It's basically from people, the reason we don't stripe a lot of the streets, because the reaction we got from the Flag Road when we striped it. But with a study that says you should just do this, it makes, it's fine, because people have that concern about the speeding. So, the feedback signs, everywhere they've been, it's been because a neighborhood group has come to me and really hammered down that they really needed something out there, and that was something that, you know, they came to. So, not everybody on the street necessarily wanted those, but there was a neighborhood group that really wanted them. Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So, if there are any questions or comments from folks in attendance, if you could go to the microphone, again, state your name and address for the record.
Hi, I'm Gloria Linden. I live on 39 Flag, and thank you for the presentation. I want to give a little bit of feedback, having lived on Flag with the yellow line and the driver feedback signs. I want to say I'm very pleased that we've put up driver feedback signs. I think it really makes a difference, and I can't wait for all of them to be done. The yellow line, on the other hand, while effective in some areas, I'm concerned that it's really driven traffic to the edges of the roads, which just highlights the fact that there's no room for pedestrians. And actually, I think gives drivers a false sense of security, that they're, hey, I'm on my side of the road, and I'm driving along, and I should be fine, when in reality, especially because of the way there are certain trees there, it's really just more dangerous around curves. And that really scares me, because my kids do walk and ride, cycle to school every day. So, I'd like to see sidewalks personally. I know the road is very narrow, and I am concerned about the fact that there are stone walls. And I know this is an issue that we have elsewhere in town, and I've given it a lot of thought, living on this street. And I haven't heard a lot of people mention turning streets into one-way streets, but I'd like to bring that up as a possibility. I'd like to see a study or have some comment on that, because I think we could get a, you know, suddenly, the road's wider, suddenly, you can put sidewalks, we can maintain, I think, you can maintain sort of the character of the road. You know, it's still a windy country road, which I love. I think it's less drastic than what I've seen floated at Dead End, I don't like that as a resident. I chose this because I do like to be on sort of a relatively busy road, I like to be able to go in and out. I don't want to be sort of trapped, that's a personal preference, I know others may differ in their opinion. And I know that when I've lived in other areas, like West Roxbury, for example, they have a lot of one-way roads, and it does calm the streets quite a bit, and it feels neighborhood-y. And I'd like to see that. So, please, whoever is listening and can, please, please think about that, and maybe give us some feedback on why or why not that isn't a good idea. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Lincoln Marahue, 32 Flag Road, just moved into town, so, about a year ago now. Almost a ditto there. I think the yellow line, in some cases, is creating a risk, because a lot of the corners are blind on that road, and if you hug the side, because the yellow line is guiding you to, and you come around a corner, you're more likely to hit somebody. So, I'm a commuter on that road, so I appreciate the access, but I also run on the road, so I have firsthand experience. So, perhaps a different alternative. I think also, the one-way street is an interesting idea for maybe, I think it's called Blackthorn Road, Blackthorn to Route 9, if that was one-way, to Route 9 only, I think that would still allow people two-way access out to 30, but would also limit things like the development that's being proposed from going upstream on Flag Road. So, maybe like 40 feet, plus that little skinny bridge there is dangerous enough. The only question I was going to have, and I think Chairman Shea answered that, is, does any of the improvements being put in, whether done or on that asterisk list, make it easier or better, or somehow give tacit approval further to that condo development? Like, is someone going to say, now, we can put that in with no problem, because we have a stripe? Or now, we can put that in, no problem, because we have the blinking signs? So, the question is, are these improvements independent of that, or are they some way to support that?
Independent of that.
Good.
And actually, the only action this board has taken with respect to that was to not allow, there was a vote that we took, a motion made, to not allow traffic from that proposed development onto Flag Road.
Right.
Really not allowing the John Boland Drive curb cut, if you will.
Oh, I thought that had been okay, or is that being...
So, that was a decision that this board made.
This board made that.
That's awesome.
That was a vote that this board made.
So, there would be no access at all?
Now, I mean, now, there's a lot to go...
Got it, got it.
With that project.
Yep.
That is in the court system now, and...
That's what I thought.
You know, I'm not, you know, I don't have updates, I'm not, I don't have any information on where that stands, so, there's still a long way to go on that. And certainly, how that plays out, I'm sure will impact further recommendations that this board would have on what we would want to implement on Flag Road as well.
Just one last point, is I do like the idea of a speed bump or two there, because part of the issue on the road is the speed, but I think Karen's report said most people were kind of within 10 miles of the speed limit. So, part of it's speed, part of it's capacity. And I think a speed bump could slow the traffic down, it'd also make the road annoying enough so people might avoid it, that we're trying to do a north-south connect, and that might keep the flow down relatively inexpensively. I'm not a traffic engineer, but I'm guessing if I had a choice of a speed bump road and a non-speed bump, I'm taking the smooth one. So, that might be a way just to keep the speed down and keep the flow off the road at the same time, without wrecking its bucolic nature.
Yeah.
Cool, thanks.
Thank you.
Welcome to town as well.
Thank you. Good to be here.
Hi, Manager Deas, Johnny, 16A Bantry. I want to thank you, the board and the DPW, for trying to make Flag Road safer with Park Central looming, hopefully, that's a whole separate discussion. I guess what I wanted to kind of ask about, and this may be due to Ms. Galligan or the board, who overlooks the work that's being done on Flag Road? Because I can tell you, the stripe supposedly down the middle of the road, it's not even, that there are definitely sections of Flag that one side is wider than the other, and it really does create a challenge in terms of trying to drive on that road safely, it's already been brought up.
Oversight, DPW Superintendent.
So, are we going to look at this issue a little bit more closely, in regards to the line not being even?
I mean, it's painted by a truck, so...
Karen, you got to use a microphone, I'm sorry.
It's painted by a truck, so if they have to steer away a little bit, that's what you're going to have, and we have it most of our roads in town, the stripe's probably not exactly down the center. So...
I think that's a major concern here.
Okay, we'll look at it, we'll look at it.
Definitely, I mean, if it's a problem, it's a problem, we can look.
Just feel like I'm being shut up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Katora Martin, 75 Deerfoot Road. I'm a member of the school committee, but obviously, here on my own behalf tonight.
I just wanted to mention a couple of things, partly by way of background, and partly by way of just sort of keeping certain thoughts on the table whenever this topic comes up. So, one thing is that I'm really happy to hear Ms. Galligan talking about how it's not just a Flag Road issue, because there are adjacent roads, such as where I live, I'm around the corner where Deerfoot meets Clifford. We see a lot of traffic there as well, it's also a very narrow road, Clifford is an extremely narrow road. And so, anytime I hear discussion about diverting traffic off of Flag and onto other roads, and that kind of thing, I think that before anything along those lines is undertaken, there really needs to be a better analysis of where would those cars be going, and on what kind of roads, and is this going to, I mean, we've had head-on collisions right on that Deerfoot extension, you know, the exit onto Route 9 is really no better, the cars on Route 9 come barreling over the hill, it's a right-turn-only lane, but, you know, there was just a big accident there a couple of weeks ago. So, it's a bigger issue than just Flag. I mean, I too, don't want to see any more traffic on Flag, so it's, I'm not advocating that either. The other thing I just wanted to mention is that last year, after the public discussion about safety, there was sort of a little group of us that got together and discussed some ideas about what could be done in that area. We came back to the board here, and are really, the thing that we kind of came to consensus on was a series of one-way roads. And we had a little graph, which we could always re-present, but, you know, there are really all of those roads in the areas, as Ms. Galligan keeps pointing out, that were surrounded by narrow roads, sidewalks aren't really feasible when you have traffic going both ways. And we came up with just a preliminary idea of how this might look, obviously, more analysis would be needed, but that is one option that keeps being floated, which I personally think would be worth looking at in more detail, if the traffic were to increase especially. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to reiterate and support a comment that was made earlier about communication. It is a shock to wake up one morning and see a yellow line down what used to be a state-protected scenic country roadway, and then wake up and see concrete bases to poles, and not understanding or knowing what they are. I appreciate very much the concern about safety, but it seems a contradiction in terms to go and reconstruct a triangle at one flag, okay, to allow easier passage of 18-wheelers, while an 18-wheeler was towed off the children's footpath to the school recently. 18-wheelers have been towed, or I guess have knocked down, or come close to knocking down electrical wires, being removed from people's front yards. So, my question is, is why wouldn't you reconstruct that triangle to make it impossible for an 18-wheeler to make that turn into Ms. Martin's street? I would think you'd want to make it bigger, put flowers on it, planters, whatever, but make it impossible for 18-wheelers to go through the two-school zone area where kids are walking to school, and, you know, some of the sections of the roadway are 17 feet wide. I mean, I've almost been hit head-on a couple of times on that roadway. But it is a state-protected scenic roadway. It used to be pretty. Taking down stone walls, and this is just my personal view, off someone's private property, again, on a state-protected roadway, is just not a good thing to do. Why have the law? You know? Again, it used to be, it doesn't take much to ruin the bucolic nature of a beautiful country road and ruin a downtown. It only takes a few people to do that. So, safety, yes, but make it impossible for the 18-wheelers to go up on people's lawns and really go down Flag Road. You're looking at me rather skeptically, Mr. Shea, so I kind of don't appreciate that, but, again, as someone living in the neighborhood and who walks the roadways, you know, that triangle, I don't understand why you'd make it easier for 18-wheelers to make that turn and go, really, they're trying to avoid Route 9 in the back up there. Thank you.
So, Ms. Galligan, how would the 18-wheelers, so if it were made impossible to navigate around that triangle, would they have to somehow, because we don't want them, you know, the best case scenario is them not going down there at all, to even get there. So, if it were made impossible for them to navigate that, wouldn't they have to then somehow back up on, back down the road?
Well, what they're doing is, the way they're coming is coming down Flag or north on Flag to get to 30, and they actually are trying to get back to 9, so they try to make that corner. So, it's basically trying to keep them so that they just continue, and they get to 30, and then they'll have to take 85 to get back down. That's what the point is, that they're not making a hairpin turn. But there's also the slowing down when you come up onto, to get onto Flag, so it's not, because right now, it looks like Deerfoot really, and Flag, it looks like Deerfoot goes to the right and is really Flag, and that the road to the left isn't Deerfoot, but Deerfoot actually makes the left. So, it's just, it's got to fix that. but Deerfoot actually makes the left, so it's just, it's got to fix that.
Todd Miller, Hickory Road, I just wanted to seek some clarification. Shea, earlier you said the board voted to restrict access from Park Central to Flag Road, is that something that's enforceable?
As the road commissioners in town, we certainly thought that it was at the time, which is why we took the vote that we took.
We don't, we don't know, or...
So, we took that vote, there certainly hasn't, that I've seen, been any modifications to the Park Central plans as a result of that. Again, there's still a lot to be resolved with Park Central, which is currently in the courts.
Any other updates in context of access to Flag Road with Park Central, or to be determined?
Certainly, I don't have any updates that I'm aware of, so.
No, this was, right, you know, Mr. Cipriano, do you have any comments on the, on the matter? Thank you, Counselor.
I was busily reviewing the environmental report, that's coming up next. The individual's question was what again? Sorry.
So, if I have it correct, so we are the commissioners of the, of the roads, and if there's a safety issue, and we make a judgment as to what is in the best safety, you know, for our residents, we can do that, you know, we have that authority. Do you agree with that?
There's no question that a board of selectmen in a town control the public ways, and you can take reasonable actions to enforce the public health, safety, and welfare, generally. Was there a more specific question here about access or closure of access?
Yeah, more specifically, it was coming out of Park Central, off of the new John Boland, that the selectmen prohibited left turn onto Flag Road. And the question the gentleman had asked is, you know, is that enforceable?
Well, we go to the reasonable standard. What would the, if you blocked that access, what other access would there be? None? None?
Route 9.
Oh, Route 9.
They'd have to go Route 9.
For acute public health, safety, and welfare reasons, it could be enforceable, yes.
Thank you, Counselor. Further?
Good afternoon, I'm Felix Olivon, 64 Flag Road. My question is more about the process of how this works. There's a lot of folks who've stood up here and brought up some very good points, valid points. So where does that go? Does that get documented somewhere, and research is done, and you get back to us, or do we assume it's our mute point if we don't hear about it?
So, no, actually, the more input that we get, the better. There are ideas that come from people who live on that road, which is exactly Mr. Purple's taking copious notes, it's being videotaped, Ms. Galligan, I'm quite confident has, you know, is taking in everything that's being said. So this is, you know, part of a campaign to learn more, to understand what some prospective ideas are, and could they be implemented? So not every idea can be implemented, you know, which are the best for the entirety of the town, but in particular, that area? And so, this is part of that campaign. So this is, this is part of that discussion, it doesn't end the discussion surely. There'll be, there'll be other nights like this.
Okay. So, I think the reason why I was thinking about this is, the presentation that I believe Ms. Galligan just did, doesn't have some of the things that have been raised before, like one-ways, and I'm not for or against, I'm just pointing out that there's been a lot of things brought up, but it seems like the presentation is targeting just some specifics. And I wonder why some of the things that have been, you know, have been coming to these meetings in the past, and there's been a lot of things said about Flag Road and, you know, the speed humps is on there, but mostly, I lost my train of thought.
So, if I'm tracking what you're saying, so the intent of this, and so there was a gentleman who reached out and said, hey, I'd like an update on the safety issues that are being done for Flag Road. I spoke with Mr. Purple, I said, when do you think we could put this on as an agenda item? Worked with Ms. Galligan about, okay, she's been doing things to help improve, you know, the traffic, you know, the safety of Flag Road, the, hopefully, the slowing down of traffic. And so that was the impetus for this particular idea. It was not, you know, an overall discussion of what could happen with Park Central, it was more of where we, where we are, you know, where are we today? And then clearly getting input about, you know, where we could be tomorrow.
Okay, and I appreciate that, I just want to make sure that all the feedback that's been given here has been captured somewhere. My only other comment is, I walk on Flag Road a lot, I jog on Flag Road, the intersection where Lovers Lane meets Flag Road is really a blind spot, and if we could put a speed hump anywhere on Flag Road, I feel like that would be a great intersection, because, especially with the yellow line, there is a lot of, there are a lot of times where I think most of the drivers feel obligated to stay within the yellow line, so regardless of whether they see someone walking, they still feel like they have to stay within their side. And that creates an issue for folks that are jogging, walking, or bicycling on that road. And now, when you have Lovers Lane, that's a really dark intersection with distracted drivers, it's really quick for someone to just creep up on you, you know, driving and not realize that someone's jogging. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anything else before we move on? Okay. We do have a hearing, I believe, that, are we doing that next, or?
Yes.
We had a hearing that didn't happen at 6:30?
We had opened the hearing, but there was no one here to represent, I, yeah, welcome. Take you, if you're more comfortable there, that's fine. Mr. Purple.
We were originally scheduled for another evening and got mixed up on the time a little bit.
Welcome. That's okay.
Thank you. My name's Scott Silverman, I am General Counsel for Prime Motor Group, and we've applied for a Class 1 license. I hope everyone has the information that's necessary to process that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have regarding the application.
Questions from the board members?
I just have a question about the site. Do you own the abutting properties? Do you have access to...
No, we do not own the abutting properties.
You have use of the abutting property?
We have, we will have use of one of the abutting properties.
The abutting property, or the closest to Parkerville?
You know, I have the general manager here, there's one piece of property that is abutting, that we are, that we have secured the rights to use, but not all of the...
The restaurant, the former restaurant, are you using that property?
I'm storing Paris on the next level, I'm not sure if it's the restaurant, there's a building on it, but it's the next level.
On the corner of Parkerville and Route 9?
Yes.
You're using that property?
I'm storing just part of the lease.
It is part of the lease. The building part of the lease?
No.
You're not responsible for the upkeep of the premises, the grass, or anything else? I would suggest that you clean the area up. It would be helpful, as property, as neighbors.
As a new resident of the town, I'm sure that we can accommodate that request.
I'd appreciate it, I think it's, it needs a little TLC.
Understood.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Just that I second Mrs. Faniff's very, very good point, so please take that under consideration.
Absolutely.
I would move to approve the Class 1 license for AMR Auto Holdings as provided in her packet, is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
And just in terms of administrative matters, is that something that we should contact Ms. Esposito about?
Yes.
To get the actual license?
Absolutely, yeah, she'll have that ready for you on Monday.
Thank you very much.
Okay. That brings us to a continued discussion of notice and intent to sell for 135 Deerfoot Road, Farsell, Mr. Purple.
Mr. Chairman, I believe, believe this is the fourth meeting that the board has had, where we've continued this discussion on the notice of intent to sell for 135 Deerfoot. I left each of you a packet of information, which essentially is just information that this board has received since the town was first presented with the, with the notice back at the end of August. There are, there is in the packet, another piece of information that was recently received from Conservation Commission, with their comments on the property, essentially, the, and I hate to just, you know, kind of distill it down, but essentially, the commission members who did walk the property, who took a look at things, six of them, two did not support the acquisition, two felt it was valuable to protect for open space, one supported carving out A&amp;R lots, and one was impartial. But they, the majority of them did feel that the decision should be brought to town meeting, so mixed on whether or not to acquire it, but felt that it was something town meeting should discuss. The other item, the only other item that the board had asked for was a 21E, a Phase 1 to be conducted, and Attorney Cipriano, oh, there he is, Attorney Cipriano is here tonight and can update the board on that process. There was a letter that was forwarded to you from the LSP with his initial findings on the Phase 1, and I think counsel can speak to, can speak to that if you so wish.
The Phase 1 analysis was completed, I spoke with the principal, Mr. Luby, and it can be disclosed in public for anybody's purpose to know what that report indicated. And the highlights of that report are that the site is not listed in any EPA or DEP database. There are no conditions that could affect soil or groundwater conditions on the premises. There are no telltale pits, ponds, or lagoons on the site. However, Enstrat was able to determine that there are two tanks on the site, one which is above ground and known, and the other one which was determined by a vent pipe, and it is buried below ground outside. And Enstrat's recommendation, based upon what can happen with these old tanks, is that both of those tanks would need to be removed. The analysis of this site was that it was a residential, agricultural, or farm site with those accommodating uses from 1845 to the 1960s, and from the 1960s on, it was solely residential. There is asbestos-contained material, ACM, observed in pipe wraps in the basement, which is typical of construction of the 1900s through the 1930s. There are data gaps, but from information, they were able to determine, there was a small orchard depicted on the eastern portion of the site in aerial photos, determined and found between 1938 and 1952. They note that during this period of time pesticides containing arsenic and other hazardous materials were common. Agricultural waste materials also were traditionally stored or dumped on older farm sites. They did no borings, nor were they permitted to do any borings, but there appears to be some mounds that could suggest that those were the old dump sites for the agricultural use years ago. Generally, there's also no significant indication of other hazardous materials on the site or adjacent to the site. So that's your summary. That basically summarizes our 200-page report, 23 pages of text, and then significant detail on plans, sketches, and photos.
Questions for Town Counsel?
If the town purchased the property, the town would be responsible for cleaning up or removing the tanks?
There is no violation noted.
I know that.
But if, if, it depends what you acquired it for, if it was to be converted to any form of housing, you would definitely have to follow that guideline.
Okay, thank you.
Do you have any idea what kind of cost that could be?
I do not, but I did learn, well, I knew this in advance, but, you know, tanks excavated, the biggest concern of environmental engineers is buried tanks outside that are old, because I think the indication was that there may have been some liquid in that old buried tank. And the only way to really determine leakage is not simply to excavate around the base of the tank, but as you see in gas stations, it's the outright removal, and that's a technical issue, because you've got to make sure that there is no hazardous liquids that are spilled on the site, and then create a environmental response from either the state or the federal agencies. So I don't have a cost factor, but they are not inexpensive, and that's the most telltale aspect of what the site revealed.
Any other questions for Town Counsel? Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
I want to thank Mr. and Mrs. Dowd for allowing us access to the property, to evaluate it. I want to start off by saying that I'm uncomfortable with what I just heard, and I'm uncomfortable with the fact that we can't have an appraisal done.
And you.
Sorry. I'm uncomfortable with what I just heard, and I'm also uncomfortable with the fact that we have not had an appraisal of the property as far as its best use, it's been the practice of this town to have one, so I can't support it, from what I've heard and what I know we've done in the past, so I'm not in favor of it. Proceeding to town meeting.
Other thoughts or comments, Mr. Shea?
So, yeah, I will echo similar sentiments that Ms. Faniff had. I am not in favor of bringing this, of the town acting on its right of first refusal on this. The town made a significant investment in the number-one identified recreational parcel in town with the golf course. I think that we need to focus on that, I think we're still, you know, a long way from knowing exactly what we need to do there. I'm concerned that, that taking CPC funds for this parcel would detract from our ability to properly do what we need to do at the golf course as well. I think it would take attention away from this, I think it's unnecessarily adding the maintenance of existing buildings, there's an in-ground swimming pool there as well, to our facilities department, so it would be adding to our budget to maintain those facilities. I don't think that we would be able to do anything other than be able to have to hold those, and it was one of the questions that we had, actually, and had gone over at the meeting that we had on a Friday morning, a week or two ago, where we would be looking at a 20-year ownership of this, of this parcel as well. I'm uncomfortable with, with that, so for those reasons, I agree with Ms. Faniff not to proceed to a special town meeting.
Yeah, the issue you raised about the golf course, I think, cannot be understated. You know, I've heard it referred to, and I agree with it, it's kind of the gateway to Southborough, it's been referred to as that, I think correctly. We have an obligation, based on last town meeting, to do everything we can to ensure that not only the public safety facility is done right and done well and done on time, but at the same time, to try to ensure that, you know, the course that we, that we bought as well is updated, maintained, you know, and the beautification of that, too. There may be things, you know, that are needed for that, and I just, I get very worried that if we tie up, you know, what could be five years of funding, we may lose that opportunity. I remain uncomfortable as well. Ms. Brascio?
I've struggled very hard on this. I also have concerns, I think there's a lot of questions that aren't necessarily answered today. But, saying that, I know that there's expenses for the golf course that are going to be coming forward, I know we had a list of some of them that might be able to be done through CPA, I don't know if all of them can, obviously, that's not under my purview as to what they would consider and what they wouldn't consider. But I always err for me. I think that, yes, there are questions, there's not a specific plan put in place yet, but I... but I guess I'm just going to take the position that the citizens pay into the CPA, and I would suggest going to town meeting and giving, letting them excise their rights.
Thank you. Mrs. Shiffrin?
Yeah, I think there's certainly some new information. The inspection on the property from the, from our building inspector, I think, would be new to the CPC. And I know that, I don't know that it was a requirement, but it was certainly a part of the funding proposal that was discussed in those meetings, was being able to sell the property at some point to replenish some funds. So I think this report is concerning to that. But my opinion doesn't change, as I've stated before, given the size of the property and the input from all of the volunteer boards that we have that have provided input to the selectmen. I would still be in favor of it going to a town vote.
Thank you, Mrs. Shiffrin. All right, so if I'm gauging the general will of the board, I will make the motion, and we'll see where it goes, that we not exercise our right of first refusal. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Not opposed? Three to two. Motion carries. Chairman's report.
Thank you for coming.
Chairman's report. Oh, I'm sorry, county administrator read the wrong thing.
He did.
Yeah, he did. Okay. Did we move through the consensus?
We did.
All of them?
Yep.
Okay. Discussion of interview process for statutory technology committee.
Mr. Chairman, I was hoping to have a little bit of information this evening. I know the school committee met last night and had a discussion about how they wanted to move forward with the interview process for the new technology committee. As you recall, the committee has appointments from three different boards committees. School committee has two appointments, selectmen have two appointments, library trustees have one appointment. Mr. Challen came to a previous meeting and talked about doing a collaborative process for interviews whereby each board would have one representative. And so a committee of three would do the interviews. School committee has some, has some interested applicants. We have interested applicants, and so they'll look at the group as a whole and then sit down and look at recommendations to bring back to the individual boards for appointments. So I have not connected with the superintendent to have discussions as to where that went last night. But I am curious whether the board is interested in moving forward with that type of approach for this appointment. Obviously, it's different than what we've normally done because we normally hold all the appointments. In this case, we hold two of five. So if the board is interested in doing something like that in order to try to move things forward so that we only have one more meeting before our December 5th meeting, if the, if the board wanted to do something like that and wanted to assign a member to participate in that, then once the superintendent and I have a discussion about where the school committee is and then have the same discussion with the library director about his board, we can begin that process and try and have things wrapped up so that you can make some appointments at your December meeting. So I leave that for the discussion of the board.
Do you have a recommendation?
My recommendation is that I think it makes sense for us to do it collaboratively. That way, we have like five candidates. The school, I think, has six interested applicants. I think that way, we get a benefit of everyone seeing all of the applicants. And, you know, I think it's, I think it's a good process if that's what was intended to do, so.
Okay. Thoughts?
Mrs. Faniff is not convinced.
I, I'm kind of mixed about it.
Okay.
I would think that each elected committee would make their appointment.
Each, each committee will make their own, will make our own appointment. We're not going to approve a slate.
Kind of like what you're suggesting.
No, it's that all of the committee members will, the committee will interview, the subcommittee will interview these individuals, all applicants, whether it was to the town or to the school. And then, you know, we'll, we'll pick the, you know, we'll pick the strongest candidates out of that group. And then the determination as to who is going to appoint who is where. And I believe that Mr. Challen had a little bit more detail as to the process and how he saw things going. I just don't have that information to share with you this evening as to those specifics. But that, that was, that was a comment that the superintendent and I did discuss as to, the committees do, I think, you know, the school committee does want to retain their two appointments. Right? As this board should retain their two, and a library trustee should have their one. But again, I think the thought being is that maybe out of the six candidates that the school has, you've got three or four strong candidates that may be better than ours or vice versa. We may have better candidates. So it's just allowing us to, you know, not out of our five, we'll have to take two, and library will have to take one, and school has to take two out of their six.
Okay.
I think if we do it together, we see what experience they all have and see how they fit together, and I think it makes more sense.
I think it would prevent, you know, individuals having to go and be interviewed by us and then go and be interviewed by school and go and be interviewed by others as well. It'd be easier on the candidates that apply, so.
Mr. Lit?
Tim Lit, 148 Woodland Road. I guess he's the guy behind all this. I can give you a little bit of context. First, this is what we had in mind when we were framing all this. The idea originated with Paul Desmond, who was the school committee chair at that time, so I expect schools to be supportive. I'm supportive of the approach. I think it's better for the candidates, and I think it's better for the town to draw from the pool. It's just an artifact of sort of the way our appointment processes have worked, that they're independent, you know, buckets that the applications go into. I did, I have run into a couple of people who said they were interested in this but found that the town website apparently requires login to get to the application form. I looked at that as late as this afternoon, and if you click on the banner on the webpage, homepage, it takes you to a page, and then if you click on any of the committees, it says, "No, sorry, you're not a town employee. You have to log in. Go away." So perhaps someone can get Mr. Leflem to look at this again. This is a repeating problem that happens with, you know, file after file and page after page. I've sort of gotten tired of the whack-a-mole of trying to chase each one of them down individually with them.
Thank you, sir. So if you're looking for guidance from the board, it sounds like the collaborative approach is the consensus.
Well, if that be the case, then I'll be looking for a volunteer.
Mr. Shiffrin?
Absolutely. I think perfect. This happened at my first meeting, so absolutely.
What do you think, Mr. Shiffrin?
Hi.
Would you like to be volunteered?
Both of these people that I saw that coming, and I'm more than willing to do that.
And if you weren't here this evening, you'd still get appointed.
Absolutely. Right of passage.
All right, so after I get more information from the superintendent, I'll be in touch, and then we can determine, you know, how that'll move forward.
Okay. Any other, anything else? Okay. Public comment? Mrs. Barron, welcome.
Good evening. Louise Barron, 11 Sadie Hut Lane. Congratulations, Mr. Shiffrin.
Thank you.
This is not related to anything that was discussed tonight. It has to do with the lights on Choate Field. Can I ask?
Please, sure.
When I have a project and I have a bid and I accept that person, we pay for the project in portions. When something is completed, they're paid, and then paid after the next project or the portion of the project. But it seems to me that something went amiss on Choate because $400,000 was paid to somebody, and the lights aren't working. And I imagine they came to the site to see the type of power the lights required, but they're not working, and I'd like a little background on this if you could help me.
Mr. Purple, do you have some background on that you can share?
Actually, Ms. Galligan, who has left, would have the best, would have the best detail on that side.
Can we have Ms. Galligan reach out to you?
Sure.
Okay, I think we have Mrs. Barron's information.
Yes.
Yes, would you do that, please? Thank you.
And then I have one more thing. There were two emails that were emailed by Mr. Kalinda to a whole group of people. And I will read them. I'm very disturbed about this. Please remember to vote tomorrow, Tuesday, November 7th. This was November 6th. November 7th, for our next selectman to fill the remaining term of former selectman John Rooney, who resigned last April. John dedicated years of outstanding service to our great town of Southborough, and there are three excellent candidates who can continue his legacy of selfless service: Dorian Jazinski, Brian Shiffrin, and Bill Boland. Then the next day, today is election day in Southborough, and there are four qualified candidates from which to choose as your next selectman. Each has an extensive public record for you to research, and each has put themselves up to public scrutiny in running for office. They should be thanked: Bill Boland, Dorian Jazinski, Brian Shiffrin, and Sam Stivers. So I didn't like this at all. I thought it was underhanded. I thought it was unnecessary. And frankly, it's not something that I would expect selectmen to do here. I don't think they should have anything whatsoever to do with endorsing or speaking on behalf of any candidate in this town. So I will read a letter and make it snappy, and this was from Marney Houlihan. Because she wrote well, I said...
So, Ms. Barron, I will, if I may respectfully interrupt, so the public...
Well, I want to read this first, please.
So we don't read letters into the record. We don't have a practice of that at all. We also don't have any practice during public comment of doing things to disparage town employees at all. The things that you are reading are completely out of context. And if you would like me, if, since I am the individual that you are directing all this to, that I crafted and sent those in my individual capacity, I'd be more than happy, after the end of this meeting, to have a discussion with you in my individual capacity. So I'm going to ask if there are any other public comments, and if not, we will... Yes, Mr. Hagerty?
Good evening. I'd also like to talk about the elections yesterday. It was an interesting day. We had a number of residents show out, and there's a lot of... I want to make a couple of comments primarily for the audience at home that'll be hearing of this because I want to share some information so to get a whole, get ahead of some misinformation and a couple of concerns. Let me just start with this. The state statute sets 150-foot boundary for no campaigning. And frankly, I tried to set it at the steel gates at the end of the walkway, trying to push the campaigners back. I was trying to push the envelope a little back. And I talked to the Secretary of State's office the day before the election, and that is not correct. It is very specific that it must be from the door to the facility. So I measured with a tape measure 130 feet from the door to the edge of the, middle of the crack of the sidewalk, and then 20 feet down. That's how it came to 20 feet. A couple of people commented that they were uncomfortable walking through that. Some people use a gauntlet. But in any case, that's the legal standard, and that's the way it's going to be. It's not my decision. It's the state statute. We all have to follow that. So I just want to get that out of the way up front. On a positive note, I want to first thank Keith Lavoy from the Trotter School. If there is an employee in Southborough that better exemplifies working collaboratively with people, I haven't met him. The only time he balked is when I jokingly told him that in Foxborough, when they hold their elections in the school, they let all the election workers eat in the faculty lounge. And that garnered a smirk, but that wasn't our intention. We had 37 town residents who acted yesterday as election workers. We had a new location. We had a consolidation into three locations. We had new voting equipment, which worked almost flawlessly. We only had two ballots that jammed of the whole night, which is unheard of. We had a couple of complaints from people that thought it was too far to walk inside, but we did have a wheelchair that we bought from the senior center to help people. We also had reading glasses for those of us that need reading glasses. But I have to tell you the thing that surprised me the most, and I heard this comment from eight, it's funny, I'm making some notes now, see this, from eight individual people I can remember, let alone all the others inside, how happy people were to vote. It wasn't to exercise their democratic right, but they were happy in the environment. And I have to tell you, with all the balls in the air and the other stuff, I would scratch my head like, "Why are you so happy?" And several people explained to me that, and I, when I thought about it, it makes sense to me. When I used to go to Woodward, there were many times I went in, I was the only one there. You know, it was just a very quiet day, whereas this was a lot of hubbub, a lot of activity. And some people said it reminded them of the transfer station because they met their neighbors and met them outside. They said there was a great community feel to it. And, you know, that's a great unintended result. So it was all very, very positive. I appreciate all the suggestions. A few suggestions and criticisms moving forward, but thank you for letting us make that change. It all worked well, and we will move on. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hagerty.
Karen Schimkis, Limbrook Road. This is a communication and kind of transparency, accountability question because you are the overseeing board to boards who do procurement of things like the lights. I sat through three days of town meeting, the whole thing, and watched the $400,000 cost of these lights get put through, only come to read in a public blog that the lights don't work. They don't plug in. So I'm saying to myself, "Who just walked away with a check for $400,000 of taxpayer money, delivered lights, didn't plug them in, they don't work. Can we return them?" I mean, like Marshalls or TJ Maxx, right? Can you go return these lights? I mean, clearly, there was a procurement, management, accountability lapse, and you're the overseeing board. So I would hope that you would look into it, come back to the public, report to the public what the total cost is going to be with the fix, because it's now $400,000 plus something. And then explain to the public, the taxpayers, why their money got spent in that fashion. I have a question on the last BOS meeting. There was an executive session listed, and it had, it was revised, the agenda was revised, and then the executive session was removed. I called the Attorney General's office to ask them about that protocol. I mean, can you list an executive session with no reason whatsoever? I mean, there was like no, it wasn't related to any case that I could see. Their reply was that the board does have to provide some sufficient explanation. It has to be, you have to name what the topic matter is, even in general, but you can't just put it on willy-nilly, blank, boom, here it is, and, and... Yeah, you can't do that. That's potentially a violation of open meeting law. So just FYI, you know, it'd be good to, in the spirit of open meeting law, keep the public informed about exactly what it is you are intending to look at, but of course, without compromising confidentiality. Last comment, I'm sorry, I was greatly upset by those emails as well. I think it's beneath the dignity of the office, of the seat.
So ma'am, I'll go ahead and stop you there. I'd be more than happy to have a discussion with you and provide you the entire context, and we can do that right after public comment is over. So, anything further?
I think you owe Mr. Stivers a public apology, sir. I think you owe Mr. Stivers a public apology.
We are going to go ahead and recess? Well, actually, we don't need to recess.
Of course, I don't expect one out of you because it's not in your nature. But thank you for the rest of the BOS. Thank you for the questions and the, looking into these answers. I appreciate it.
Is there a motion to adjourn? Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.